Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, because we didn't meet last week, we're gonna have to do briefing for both tonight's meeting and next week's meeting, but before we start the actual formal briefing, I'm gonna invite agenda changes. Some of them are listed, and we'll just kinda go through order down the agenda. And that way, the signup sheets for tonight and testifying can be prepared well before 5:00, so that's why I'm going a little bit out of order, but...
So, Council President, Mr. Perkins, you had a request to take something off the consent?
That's for next week.
Is it for next week?
Next week.
Okay.
Yes, next week, correct.
We'll get to that. So, I am just starting on page seven of tonight's packet. Several things in the consent agenda. And maybe, unless there is an objection, we could just take matters 14A, B, 15, 16, 17, 18 as one motion to add to. But before that, we would actually need to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, unless there's an objection, matters 14A, B, 15, 16, 17, 18, is there a motion to add them to tonight's consent agenda?
So moved to add.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those are added. Did have a request from the administration to table special budget ordinance 36277. Is that just indefinitely?
Indefinitely, yes, sir.
Okay. Where is that? That is the adding clerical positions at the downtown police precinct. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Abstentions? All right, that is added. Then, I'm on page nine, adding a classified police radio dispatcher position. So, is there a motion to add special budget ordinance 36317 to the agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right. Next, before we leave special budget ordinances, I know we had two circulated recently that were briefed at committee today, and one was to add $1 million from 1406 money to be used to pay contracts that we approved for affordable housing, and then $3.1 million of 1590 money to do the same. And I don't know if you wanna... Is there a formal number for those?
I'm not sure I have the same ones, because I understand I was waiting for updated ones, but the next numbers will be C36322 and C36323.
Okay, we'll make 22 the 1406 money and 23 the 1590 money. Is there a motion to add those two to the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right, and those will have to get read in their entirety. I think there was one more we were waiting for. Not sure, I haven't checked my email recently, and that is to create the CMIS or CIMS. Has that gotten forwarded to us yet, or not?
Let me look real quick. I've got the George Doll items.
Yeah, those are the two we just did.
I'm not seeing another one yet.
Okay. All right, this is the special budget ordinance that we discussed earlier today. It's up to $372,194. It's in the... coming from the Community Human Services Special Revenue Fund. Basically, it would allow us to contract, or it would allow us to contract with the state of Washington to provide CMIS personnel, project employees, to help them track what's going on, and the rehousing of Camp Hope. I wonder if we can add to the agenda. We'll have to... just so for the signup purposes, we'll have to do a formal motion once we get the final version of it.
I just got it.
You just got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Did the rest of us get it?
I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Council President, will a number of these items have to be read for the record?
Yeah, these, all three of these will have to be read for the record.
Would it make sense to do that during briefing, since we're gonna have a pretty long session tonight?
I don't know if that's in order or not. Do you have to read them in legislative session, or can you read them in briefing?
I guess that's up to you. We typically read them at the 6:00 session.
Let's ponder that for a while. We don't have to read it to get it on the agenda. So, you should now have this new one. So, what is the... the number for this one?
36324.
Okay. All right, and that's the one that was just circulated. I think we were gonna do the staffing, the other ones we're gonna do next week. That wasn't quite as urgent. So, is there a motion to do add 36324 as presented in email?
So moved.
Okay, so moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right. Those are added. Now, we're at resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Excuse me, I just wanted to make sure. I just got one more SBO, and it's for...
Yeah, I think we're gonna do that next week.
The $56,000 one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, one for sure on this is Resolution 0099, ratifying the mayor's executive declaration of a civil emergency. Is there a motion to add that to tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right, that's added. Any other actions under resolutions?
Yes. So, we all got a email from Carol Evans, Spokane Tribe, on the 0097. And I remember, we had this conversation before, and I think, given what I'm reading from this email, I'd like to make a motion to defer this indefinitely.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm frustrated by the indefinitely. We sent this resolution out weeks ago, waiting for a response, and we sent it to the tribes. We got something today. If we wanted to defer for a couple weeks so that we could discuss and get their input, I'm happy to do that. A number of the claims that are made in there contradict what our water department and, you know, Avista and many others have said to me, and so if we're gonna defer this indefinitely on that one testimony, I think that it deserves a little bit more than deferring it right now.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would, just to agree. I mean, if we need some more info, let's get some more info, but to just simply say that we're not gonna take a vote on a really important issue doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
It's a resolution... Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Agreed.
It is a resolution. It's not binding. Initially, I had a number of concerns, so this wouldn't be the first touch I've had with this. And I've found a number of inaccuracies with the resolution as well, so we can always, can always bring it back. It definitely means we're not considering this, but you certainly are more than welcome to bring something else back after you've talked to the tribes, but I don't see that you're gonna get any confluence of agreement in the next three weeks, when it took them this long to respond. It's their timeline, and I respect that. It's not ours.
And I would, I would just...
Councilmember Stratton.
I would second that. I think it, if we really wanna do the right thing, and we want to bring this forward, I think it has to be done so with some respect to the tribes. And I know that you reached out, because I had asked you to, and you did, and I appreciate that, but I do think that if we can set this aside and start reaching out to the tribes and have more in-depth conversations about this, to me, that's doing the right thing, to hear what their thoughts are, what they would like to do moving forward, but I think to put another timeline on this is not gonna make the problem any easier to deal with.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, look, if you wanna stand up for the tribes, vote against the resolution, if that's the perspective that you wanna take. I mean, if you wanna stand up for others who have concerns about losing our dams, then vote yes for the resolution. We don't need to be afraid of taking a vote. We get way too afraid of taking votes on this council. Let's not be afraid to take a vote.
We're gonna go to Councilmembers Oppone, and then Councilmembers Bingle.
Councilmember Bingle, did you reach out to the riverkeeper and get their feedback, too?
I did not reach out to the riverkeeper, no.
So, I think there just needs to be more outreach.
Councilmember Bingle.
I would just say that I'm happy to take a vote on it tonight, if that's, if you prefer we do it that way. I mean, that, I can do that.
Councilmember Bingle.
So, the point about we can bring it back later, if it's tabled indefinitely, only the folks who voted to table it can bring it back, so I can't bring this back.
Right.
So, again, if we want to defer to do more public outreach, like I said, I've reached out to a number of people, obviously not everybody, 'cause I didn't reach out to the riverkeeper, but I mean, I've reached out to dozens and dozens of organizations, people for and against. I think this was really reasonably written, that even includes some of the tribal concerns, making sure that we're taking care of fish species and investing in their concerns, and so I thought this was a very reasonable proposition. When it comes to the number of inaccuracies, I would love to hear them, because again, these are not numbers that I have made up. These are numbers coming directly from, you know, state reports, from, again, I mean, none of this is something that I made up. This is all pretty thoroughly researched, run through, again, a number of folks. If you don't, if you don't like it, I get it. I mean, we can vote against it, but tabling it indefinitely, to me, means that this is, this is never coming back, and it is a really important issue when it comes to our side of the state, and so I would say, let's not, let's not defer it. If you, if you don't like it, then, you know, we can vote against it.
Just a point of clarification, you are correct that you couldn't bring this specific back unless you were voting in the majority, but you could file another one at any time that does the same thing, just so that you know you have that option. But Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I'll just say, Councilmember Bingle, when I was actually reading the resolution today, and I just sent out an email to Carol Evans and to Tony Lodge, and they immediately responded in total opposition, so I don't know how much dialogue had happened, but every time something with the tribes come up, I think about our land acknowledgement, and how are we going to take that into consideration. So, we can't say we're gonna take into consideration on one hand, but if it's not in alignment with what we wanna do, then we're not gonna consider it. So, we can take the vote tonight, and it can come back, put a deferral, keep it alive, or it comes back in some reiteration after a conversation, so I can go either way.
Councilmember Bingle.
Again, the reason why the timeline matters is, we do have a state legislation, legislative session that's coming up. There are a number of issues that we're gonna take up, that we're gonna do resolutions about, that are signaling to the state, these are our priorities, these are things that we want. I think this does have a specific timeline. Like I said, if we want to defer for a month or something like that, because I'm glad that you got an immediate response. I sent something out, Councilwoman Stratton, how, three weeks ago, I said something out, and I haven't heard anything back, and so if they are, if others are interested in weighing in on this, I would love to hear their opinion, because it was intended to be a very reasonable and understandable resolution. It's not anything that's, that, you know, isn't trying to pit anybody against each other. It's a very reasonable resolution.
So, I would like to amend, then. I'll amend this to, let's defer this for a month.
Sure.
And that will give you time to reach out to the tribes, reach out to the waterkeeper, riverkeeper, and others that may not have been included, and make some changes that reflect... So, about this, it needs to be collaborative with them. So, get to the point where tribes can say, yes, okay. Clearly, they're not okay, so get to the point where perhaps they can say okay, perhaps riverkeeper can say okay, and a month should be enough time, I'm guessing.
Well, I hope so. Like I said, I sent it out three weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything back, and so it wasn't anything that wasn't intended to be collaborative. It was very, it was intended to be collaborative.
So, you're making amendment, it'd be December 5th?
December 5th is gonna be my, yes.
And who seconded it?
I did again.
I did.
Would you accept that friendly amendment?
Yep.
Councilmember Oppone.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment on that and encourage you to also maybe take it to the Equity Subcommittee, maybe from the Rights Commission, other folks that might have opinions about it, too.
All right, so the current motion for us is to defer this resolution until December 5th legislative session. I'm sorry.
I just, just a clarification, you mentioned that not this, if it was indefinitely deferred, that this version couldn't come back, a different version could. Just asking for your opinion, under our rules, is there a point where it could be considered dilatory, if you're just changing a word, or is there, is there any guidelines?
I don't, I don't think, I think you just need to go through the, you have to get a new number. Essentially, you have to get a new number, has to go to committee again.
Okay.
That's how I interpret it.
Okay.
We did that recently on that funding for municipal court?
Yes.
Yeah, it was essentially the same thing. All right, any other discussion? All right, Councilmember Bingle.
I guess my last point would be, if this is something that we're deferring, if anybody would like more information, again, anybody can comment on this. It's not, again, intended to be exclusive in any way. We reached out to a number of organizations that don't, that might not agree with this resolution. Again, it's, it's hard to remember and reach out to everybody without collaboration from people who have better connections with folks that you don't, and so as I sent this out weeks ago, it would have been great weeks ago for people who had these concerns to tell me at that time, hey, reach out to these people, as Councilwoman Stratton did, and I really appreciate that, and I sent it out to those folks, and so if, if that's what we're gonna be doing, then let me know if there are folks, like you just said, again, happy to reach out to anybody and share it, 'cause it's, it's incredibly reasonable. And again, I want to say, the number of inaccuracies, the people that we're saying are inaccurate are people like Lawrence Earl, Avista, other groups around the state that, that were very involved in me asking them, what would you, you know, what is accurate about this, and so we're saying a number of people who are experts in their fields are inaccurate in the statements that they're making, so.
That's, we don't need to get into that.
Yeah.
I'll get into it with you later, if you like.
Beautiful, beautiful. Yep.
All right, all those in favor of deferring until December 5th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay. It is deferred to December 5th. All right. Anything else on page 10? Page 11... So, in the notes, there is a note to substitute on redistricting ordinance, but I'm confused by that, 'cause I thought we, if someone can, I thought we amended it last time.
This language had to clarify the testimony that was taken, if I recall?
Yeah, I think Mr. Piccolo had a couple small edits to what you all did, and then we did also update the map to the final, final version from planning.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to substitute?
So moved substitution?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to substitute? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay. All right, that is substituted. Anything else under hearings?
Council President?
Yep.
Can I move to defer the final reading, I guess, of, or the 1% property levy tax? Does that see 36307 for one week?
So, you wanna have the final vote on the property levy?
On the 14th.
H2. And do you wanna defer the hearing, or continue the hearing on it as well, or do you wanna have the hearing tonight as well?
I would defer the hearing, too. We have a packed agenda.
All right, so there's a motion to continue H2 hearing and a final vote on finance matter 2022-0001 until the 14th. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Excuse me, are we talking about H1A and B?
Oh, was I on the wrong one?
No, that's budget.
Is it the budget?
Oh, it's the...
Oh, no, I was wrong.
It's H1B.
Sorry, it's H1B. Okay, I will restate that. So, the motion is to defer the hearing on H1B, or, and final vote on ordinance C36307. And that, confirming that's your motion? Councilmembers Oppone?
So, that defers both the hearing and the vote to next week?
To next week.
Yeah.
Which is what, the 14th?
14th. And the second, who had the second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Okay, so it's A and B. All right. All right, any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's pretty clear the direction we're gonna go on this, so I think we should just rip the Band-Aid off and let people know kinda what our decision is, so I, I'm gonna vote no on it, and I think we should just get it done so people know what we're doing.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that we're still discussing budget and have different ideas, so another week might be good to just kinda see which direction, for more information.
All right, all those in favor of continuing the hearing at H1 and the final reading ordinance, H1B, until the 14th indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Do you nays? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred to the 14th. Okay. All right, I think that's, that's all for agenda. Anyone else have any? It's almost a record for agenda changes. All right, with that, we'll move on to the briefing. I guess we'll go to the 14th.
Did you want to approve this agenda as set?
Yes. Sorry, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the November 7th agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Well, nay. Any abstentions? Okay, agenda's approved. Now, we'll go to briefing of the November 14th agenda.
All right, this is the, good afternoon, council. City Administrator Johnny Perkins, council president, members of the city council. This is the advanced briefing for Monday, November 14th. Consent item, agenda number one, staff has asked for a postponement, I believe. Mr. Harris, is that, is that accurate? So, we'd like to postpone that. Do you have a date in mind? Indefinitely, then?
All right.
So, we'd like, ask for postponement indefinitely, council president.
Is there a motion to defer item one indefinitely? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred.
Thank you, council president, members of the city council. Item two on the consent agenda is purchase from salt distributors of Spokane Valley ice kicker for the street department. Our presenter, Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, council president and council. The street department seeking approval for the purchase of ice kicker to cost not to exceed $115,000 annually.
You're gonna have to educate. What's the difference between salt and ice kicker?
Ice kicker is the blue salt.
Okay.
So, it's got some corrosion inhibitors, and it's a new product that we're trying that works a little bit better than the normal salt, a little bit more environmentally friendly.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Items three through 10 on the consent agenda, instead of, actually, items three through nine, instead of reading them all, Chris Avery's gonna give a briefing on the deal with purchases, value blankets, and contract renewals.
Good afternoon, council members. The first item today is a purchase of an air compressor and air dryer from Atlas Copco. The purchase price for the air dryer is $158,660.40, including tax and delivery, and the air compressor is $433,259.74, including tax and delivery. The next item is a first value blanket renewal with North Star Chemical for the purchase of hydrochloric acid used at the waste energy facility for treatment of boiler feedwater. This is a one-year renewal with a cost not to exceed $67,300. The next item is a one-year value blanket renewal with Atlas Copco for as-needed compressor rentals. The cost of this renewal is not to exceed $135,000. The cost of this renewal is not to exceed $135,000. Item six is a value blanket renewal with Wemco for the purchase of as-needed mechanical components for the bridge cranes at the waste energy facility. This is a one-year renewal with a cost not to exceed $160,000. Item seven is a one-year renewal with Wemco for crane maintenance and inspection services. The bridge crane components of this renewal is not to exceed $100,000, while the auxiliary crane and lifeline inspections is not to exceed $60,000. Item eight is a one-year renewal with online cleaning services for boiler blast cleaning to remove slag and ash from the boilers. The amount of this renewal is not to exceed $345,000. And the final item is a one-year renewal with Faust fabrication for as-needed grapple repairs and refurbishment. This renewal has a not-to-exceed cost of $85,000. Be happy to answer any questions on any of those. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next item, item 10, is a contract with Spokane County Sheriff's Office to receive funding from the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs for the registered sex offender registry verification program. Our presenter is Assistant Chief Justin Lundgren.
Good afternoon, members of council. This is a contract to be entered into with Spokane County to receive money from WASPIC for the registered sex offender address verification program. We have one detective currently who is, full-time job is to, to conduct these offender checks, and this money goes towards paying a portion of his salary as well as some travel and training expenses. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lundgren. Next items are on consent agenda, items 11, 12, 13. Our presenter is Dan Buller. They deal with agreement for additional design support in relation to the Garland Avenue pathway project, a low bid of Power City Electric, and a public works agreement with Rockin DW Construction. Sorry, you're not doing that last one, Mr. Steele is, go ahead.
Thank you. Trying to collect my thoughts, I won't go bust my way through that one.
Attention, Dan, you told me to do something funny up here, so I just did.
So item 12 is the proposed contract amendment with Parametrics pertaining to the Garland Avenue pathway near Shaw Middle School, Skill Center, and the Northeast Community Center. Proposed amendment to Parametrics contract is to add rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the corner of Garland and Cook and associated curb bumpouts. It also adds traffic control, signing and striping design, and signal rework design at Market and Garland to accommodate pedestrian crossings. Proposed amendment of $46,070 is paid for with project funds, most of which are federal grant, except for the flashing beacon, which is part of Cycle 10 Traffic Calming. And item 12 is proposed low-bid contract with Power City Electric of Spokane for CSO 24, 26, and Springfield Lift Station controls for $384,747.90, to which we propose to set aside administrative reserve. Project installs remote controls and monitoring at the CSO tanks at First and Adams, and the one across from the library, and at Springfield Lift Station, which is near Trenton Hamilton, as part of the sewer department's SCADA master plan, and it is locally funded. Two other bids, the low bid was about 10% over the engineer's estimate. Work is planned next spring and summer.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Now items 13, 14, 15, and 16, various public works agreements and consulting contracts. Our presenter is Mr. Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. Number 13, this is an agreement with Rockin DW. We're going to be remodeling the restrooms at the police academy, both men's and women's, bringing them up to a more current ADA standard, realigning some of the stalls, one of them in both restrooms, which is unusable due to the alignment, you know, of the porcelain on the wall. Literally, with your utility belt and equipment, you cannot sit on it, so. We're going through both restrooms, new tile, new floors, new lighting, new porcelain in them, new dividers. It's, it's something that's been long overdue for the academy, so. Number 14, this is with Krueger sheet metal. This gets our building, our lovely city hall here, a new roof. I don't know how many of you, I'm pretty sure most of you have been up on the roof at one point or another, the roof leaks a lot, and you're all on the seventh floor, so you recognize the roof leaks a lot. This is a complete remove and replace. This gets this new insulation, brings us up to current building code, which is an R38 average across the entire thing. Cleans up the asbestos that we do still have on the, it's roughly the second floor with most of our HVA, our smaller HVAC equipment on it, yes, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt, just when you're, when you're done, I have a question.
Oh, okay, so it gets both those things. We get a 20-year warranty out of this, and it moves us out of the rolled roofing asphalt, built-up kind of thing, into a TPO membrane roof, which is, you know, much more durable, much longer lasting, it's kind of the more current technology.
The, the funding for the roof, is that just general fund dollars?
It's general fund dollars that have been set aside for exactly this, and then there were some additional dollars that had been set aside for other improvements to city hall that we went, okay, we're going to defer those, we're going to take this on because the roof is like number one.
So that kind of gets my question, so how do we, in terms of city-owned assets, how do we prioritize what's most needed? Because I would, I believe that probably there's a good argument to be made that replacing the HVAC system at the MLK Community Center is probably a higher priority than the roof here. But I could be wrong on that, and I'm just curious how those decisions are made.
It's a really good question. One of the things that, that our new director, Jeff Teal, has brought in is a very strong background in planning. And so we've begun roof assessments for all of our buildings. We were working with Tremco, they're working building by building to go, okay, this one needs a re-roof, this one needs to be replaced, this one, you know? And, and so they're, they're completing that process. We are also doing an HVAC assessment, starting with city hall. When we rolled over to the MLK Center, because we, we all got that, that notice, we rolled our HVAC tech in immediately, and we were over there, we got noticed Friday, we were there on Monday, started going through it. What we found was, there was a lot of equipment that was not functioning. It doesn't need to be replaced, but there's a lot of it that wasn't functioning, it wasn't, it just wasn't running at optimal. So our, our tech has been over there the last week and a half, he's burned about 60 hours, but it's only been about $5,500 worth of replacements. And their heat is up, we're going. Now what we're completing now is we're, he's going to go through the rest of it and go, okay, this is what it needs to bring it up to snuff, to get us new controls, to get us, get us up and running. We don't anticipate that being anywhere near the number that we were originally given, based on what we've seen so far. So from that point, we've done city hall, we're looking at the community centers, and then we're going to continue to work our way through the various buildings we have, to build that plan, to bring it back and go, okay, this is now our informed capital program for roofs, HVAC, you know, all the various pieces.
Sorry, one more question, is that strategy, is that something relatively new? And I ask that because my understanding is, the group that ran that facility before the MLK, it became the MLK Community Center, that they also had HVAC issues. And so I'm just wondering what?
It is a new story, like, like Jeff has been around for about 18 months, and when he came, he came in and he went, you guys don't have any plans, we went, nope. And so that has been, that has been very much a drumbeat of his, is, is, you know, go through, do the assessment, and no. And, and then we can, we can bring information to you and go, okay, over the next five years, we're going to need $5 bazillion, or whatever the number is, to do roofs, or HVAC, or whatever it is. But we are, we are, we are very diligently working our way through that.
Very helpful.
To provide that information, yes.
Thank you.
So some of us were here when we redid the outside of the building?
Yes.
And it was like sitting in a dentist's chair for eight hours? So I, I know it was. I want to know if, are we going to be required to work remotely? Or can we stay while the roof is being repaired?
The roof will be much quieter than all of the drilling and cutting and chewing on the sides of the building that we did for, like, 14 months. The, most of the work, they will end up setting up, you know, a lift to hoist things off, but there will not be a massive amount of drilling and chipping and grinding. If, if we get to that point, we will have an advance notice quite a ways out. We'd be able to go, okay, they're going to be doing some significant hole cutting or something, three weeks from now, so you maybe want to be gone for a day or two. There's not 14 months where the work coming at us here, so I, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
But I'd rather not repeat that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this side?
No, you go ahead.
All right, I just had a question about the bathroom remodel at the training facility.
Yes.
If the city were to get funding from the state legislature to remodel the facility, would that, is that part of our ask to the state? Or is that, I'm trying to get an idea of what our ask to the state is, is that part of it? If the state were to give us funding, could we use that funding for something else?
Maybe, have you been involved in that conversation we've been having, about getting the state to pay for all of this?
Oh, I am not.
Okay.
That's interesting.
I just come and ask for approval, I don't ask where the money comes from, so.
Okay, we might need to talk about that before next week.
Great, all right, number 15. This is a consultant agreement with Integris Architecture. We will be doing a phase one look at the water department. About 2018, we brought in an architecture firm to do kind of a space and use analysis of the water, wastewater departments, looking at the number of staff, the pieces of equipment. What would their campus look like optimally? Now, this then takes us kind of to the next level. Using that information, we go, okay, so now we want to bite off some pieces, we want to do some work at the campus. What does it look like to, you know, look at the circulation? What does it look like to tackle some new office space? Or to rebuild, you know, the warehouse in a, in a more useful function? So this kind of gets us to that next level and actually lines out some projects for us over the next few years that we can take off in bites. So after this, you would then see us come forward with a project, looking for approval to do construction documents, and go to bid on a specific project, so.
And what, from a high level, because we have a facility on North Hamilton, then we have a facility on East Sprague for water, right? Is there talk about trying to get them all into one place, or not?
We did, in 2018, there was a, there was a conversation that, you know, we went fairly in-depth in, and bringing wastewater and water together on the one campus on North Foothills. What we ran into, and it's still a significant hurdle, is the sheer number of vehicles that you're dealing with. It pretty much required a garage. I mean, you weren't going to get out of that without building a significant parking garage. And that cost kind of became prohibitive. So to my understanding, that conversation has kind of languished for quite a while. And so sewer is just looking at how they best optimize their site on Sprague.
And what about them going to Nelson?
I know that, that again, triggers a parking garage conversation, because the, the space needed there for the additional 270 vehicles, or whatever it is. It, either way, you trip that parking garage kind of requirement, so that's a, that's a, that's a big, big pill to swallow, but I, I would imagine eventually we will end up there at some point in the future, so. All right, and then number 16 is a consultant agreement with Architects West. This is for the design of the restrooms, showers, pods, laundries, all of those elements that go into the new Trent Street Shelter that we have spun up. This gets us bid documents, this gets us our estimate, this allows us to have an informed decision about what that cost is going to be. Right now, we, we have some ballpark estimates, but until we actually kind of walk the walk with a consultant who can put pen to paper, we're just kind of swinging in the dark, so.
You went, I lost track of one thing earlier, on, on the roof, that's in our CIP budget for next year, does that, does that matter? That we're doing it this year?
To my, to my understanding, no, we've, we've kind of rolled it forward to get the bid together. We won't be doing the work until next year, so I don't know if that's kind of a nuance thing, but.
So we wouldn't be paying the money until next year?
No, yeah, we're going to be ordering materials. One of the things we've done, and I'm sure all of you are very well aware, is with supply chain issues the way they are, a door. Go ahead, try to order a wooden door, you're probably 16 to 20 weeks out. So what we've asked our contractors is, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to process the bid, we're going to approve the bid, order your stuff, and we won't start work until stuff is on, all of our, our equipment and materials are on site. Because we don't want to start something and then have it languish for 14 months, making noise, so.
And then finally, a little bit off topic, but similar to what you've been discussing, we've been trying for a while to get the city to start exploring the ESCO contracts on energy efficiency and things like that. Is there, is that included in the overall planning for these buildings yet, or is that?
It is, that was, I don't know, the, the acronym ESCO kind of, I mean, I recognize it, but I don't know, I don't have a lot of detail on that. But one of the other elements we've been looking at is, with each of our facilities and our HVAC look, what can we get out of them for better efficiency? Also, what can we look at for alternative heat sources? What can we look at for, we want to bring all of those things into the, into the mix so that we have a, you know, a long-range vision that actually is very well-informed about, okay, this is what it looks like if you try to do a heat pump at city hall, or if you, if you use solar at city hall. Bring all of those pieces in, you know, and look at light harvesting with our windows, and, you know, and, and just bring all the bits. Again, this is, is really nice with Jeff's experience over at the community colleges, he's got, you know, 19, 20 years over there. They, they've kind of forged ahead in a lot of those things where we, we are not up to that yet, but he's like, let's go, let's bring it up, so.
Great, thanks.
Council President, I'd just like to acknowledge our facilities director, Jeff Teal, and Dave Steele. Mr. Teal and Mr. Steele are doing an incredible job with our facilities. They're working on a preventive maintenance program so we can get a better understanding and handle of what our assets are, where they stand in the maintenance process, and just, their leadership has been very much appreciated by the mayor administration. So Dave, I wanted to compliment you and Jeff, great job.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, moving on, our consent agenda, last two items. Item 17 is report of the mayor on pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, and they were approved by their respective boards. And item 19, or 18, city council meeting minutes, both 17 and 18's items will be completed with their appropriate information for the council meeting on Monday, November 14th. Moving to special budget ordinances, I believe Chief Lundgren already briefed us on the first ordinance relating to accepting the RSO grant funds. Therefore, I'd like to move to our next budget ordinance, specifically as it relates to the inflationary cost increases that we are seeing in our fuel costs. And so our presenter is Mr. Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Johnny. This, good afternoon, council. This, this SBO is to, basically to account for the increase in the price of fuel, gas, and diesel over the last 12 months, just shy $1.3 million. Of course, for, we purchase fuel under vendor fuel, we sell it to the departments as, as fuel sales, interfund fuel. So this, this will get us to the end of the year. Any questions on that?
So, so we're short $1.3 million in our, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
2022 budget was based on last year's fuel prices.
Right.
The increase in the fuel prices over the year has, has got us, and we should be underneath that. This, of course, the, the revenue source is the department's budgets, but most of the, in fact, I think all of the departments should be able to cover the, the extra expenses through budget savings.
So I guess my question then is, in terms of next year's budget, are we planning for the LCFS, and how much, how much do you expect that's going to increase our costs?
Actually, the LCFS are the, it's not called the LCFS, but for Washington, but.
The low-carbon fuel standard, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. So that, for, for renewable fuels, if you take California as an example, actually renewable fuels are, are showing up less expensive because of, of the incentives, and so.
So we're going to save money next year on fuel?
Yeah, for that, and for, for, it looks like for renewable natural gas. We've got some things that we're working on, and I'll, we'll, those will come to light over the course of time, but, but, yeah, so I'm not anticipating any extra increases. And then, of course, 2023 budget was based on 2022 actual fuel prices. They've started to come down a little bit, so I think we're safe for 2023.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Our next item under special budget ordinances, as a matter of increased appropriation in the hotel motel tax fund, our presenter from our finance department, Michelle Murray.
Thank you, good afternoon, council president and council members. This is basically a housekeeping, housekeeping item, because we did not budget in the 2022 budget enough to pass through funds from the state to the Spokane Public Facilities District. So we've already spent almost $3 million this year, and I'm just asking to add revenues of $1.5 million and expenditures of $1.5 million to go ahead and continue to be able to pay them for the rest of the year.
Does that mean that we had a faster recovery in travel sector?
It like bumped up to over 500, almost $500,000 a month the last couple months. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next special budget ordinance is deals with an action arising from the need to budget for the prior year costs associated with the local 270 labor agreements. And our presenter, also from the finance department, Jacob Miller.
Thank you, council. So this SBO covers the costs of the local 270 agreement that was passed on July 11th. That particular agreement has had a 4% increase in wages dated back to July 1st of 2021, and then another 5% July 1st, 2022. So this, this SBO covers the retroactive wages that need to be paid, or that were paid to those employees for their increased wages back then, and then also the additional wages that we anticipate for the remainder of 2022. So the total is $5.5 million, spread across 23 funds, I believe. Do you have any particular questions about it?
23 different funds, I guess, how, how did that? I guess, how, how did that, how do we piece that together?
Ultimately, so our payroll department calculated the actual wages, retroactive wages, that needed to be paid based on where those employees are, where they're allocated. So we take the actual retroactive pays and then just where those positions are accounted for, I suppose.
Because a lot of them are enterprise funds, utility funds.
Yeah, certainly.
So none of them are general fund, then?
There are, there's quite a few general fund. I think one point...
So this is all of 270, then?
Entirety, yep.
Okay, okay, so not just a port, okay.
Thank you.
Just quickly, wanted to say congratulations to Jacob on the birth of the baby. It's exciting stuff, yes.
Congrats.
Congrats.
All right. Our next items are under our first reading ordinances, and we have three dealing with MAP amendments to our city's comprehensive plan. And our briefer is Mr. Kevin Freibot.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. Don't be afraid, just because I'm putting up a presentation, I promise to be brief. I know you have quite a bit of a agenda today. So thank you again for, for having us. This is just a very quick summary of the comprehensive plan amendments that will be coming to you November 21st. This is this year's suite of amendments. As you recall, these go through 14-month process, and we are close to the end, which has got us all very excited. But the, just so you know, you have been provided quite a bit to read, just a little bit, probably two volumes of an encyclopedia. There should be findings and conclusions from Plan Commission, some lengthy staff reports, additional comments that we received after the staff reports, and then any additional materials that we have. You did receive one comment letter today from Carol Tomzick in Lincoln Heights. As we receive additional comments, we'll make sure to forward them on to you, so. This year, we have five private applications, four amendments to the land use plan map, basically rezones as well, and then two city-sponsored. I'm just going to very quickly go through them and let you know if I have any updates, but feel free to stop me if you have questions. The first one is 280. This is the one at the base of the bluff. We do have a, this is going to multifamily, or proposed to go to multifamily. We do have a letter from the applicant. There was some discussion about height limits on this one with between 70 or 55 feet. The applicant has indicated that they're, they're fine with 55 feet. They can make their project work with that.
Quick question, was there, so I read some of that, but was there also another one for 35 feet, or am I thinking of something else?
35 is the base height.
Okay.
For RMF. So they're asking to go up, whatever they can, whatever they can get, essentially. They had asked for 75, but 75 isn't one of the choices.
Okay.
So 70 was their proposal, 55, they're okay with 55. And that was what Plan Commission recommended.
Okay, thanks.
The next one's on Freya. This is several properties. There's one on Freya and several there off of Fifth Avenue. No updates on this one. There's another, this is 282 on 31st Avenue, up by the Lincoln Heights District Center. Plan Commission, you'll recall, recommended this one be CC4, centers and corridors type 4, instead of residential multifamily, which is what the applicant originally proposed. And I believe the letter from, from Carol Tomzick relates to this one as well as, as well, at least one other. This one is on 27th, this is 283. This is five duplexes recommended to go to multifamily. We don't have any updates on this one. And the last of the MAP amendments is on Francis. This is 284. We don't have any updates, but I do just want to remind you that, that, that small property in the middle here with the star on it, that property owner has requested that they not be included in the change. And so the ordinances, and that was Plan Commission recommendation followed that, and so that's how the ordinance is written. Yes, sir.
So would the, the, the change upzone them, or would it downzone?
If they were, if it was approved, their property is currently split zoned between RSF and office. It would make their entire property office.
And they, they want to remain single-family?
They want their property to remain split zoned as it is now.
But there's, but, but they wouldn't be non-conforming if it did go to all office, correct?
Single-family homes are allowed in office zones, so it wouldn't have any effect on whether their properties, their house is allowed to stay or not.
So understanding their, their personal desire, I mean, what would be, knowing that it doesn't have any harm on them to be upzoned, what would be the better, better outcome for the city in terms of our zoning map and continuity of, of zones?
Better is hard to answer. Generally, it's cleaner to not have split zones, which is why this one was included. It's tough to say. I do know the, the property owner's concern is really around their property tax. They're concerned their property tax would go up.
Is there legitimacy to that?
I honestly couldn't tell you. We have reached out to the assessor, but there's not a lot of clear evidence as to whether it would really change it or not.
Okay, okay.
So that's the last of the MAP amendments. There are two, or the land use plan map amendments, there are two city-sponsored. One is MAP TR-5, which you'll recall is the bike network map. Colin Quinnhurst brings these forward frequently. There's a suite of changes, and detailed maps are provided in your packets, if you want to take a look at those. And then the last one, 098, this is MAP TR-12. These are the arterial network map designations in the city. This one also includes, not only does it include some route changes throughout, but it also includes a text change to accommodate some of the projects that came out of the US 195 study. You might recall Chapter 4, the comprehensive plan's a little different. It includes some improvement projects, because putting them there not only helps us to develop the CIP, but it also helps the city to secure funding for those projects, among other topics. It's part of the Link Spokane effort that was put in in 2017 to kind of look at these as a whole. So this includes not only the MAP changes, but the text changes as well. There's a paragraph basically in a list of projects. And that is the last one. So we were, we will happily bring these back to you on the 21st for a slightly longer presentation, just to keep the public up to date on any changes, and then testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Freibot.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Council President, members of city council, the final two items on the advanced briefing from Monday, November 14 are under hearings. H1 is a final reading ordinance adopting a six-year citywide capital program. H2, continued hearing on the proposed 2023 budget. Presenter is Jessica Stratton.
Hello, council. So the first hearing on November 14th is the CIP ordinance, which will have its final reading and vote that day, which if the approval means that the first year of the six-year program, so 2023, is officially incorporated and becomes part of the 23 adopted budget. So that's what that is. And then the second hearing is just next week. This just holds space for public testimony on the 23 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Stratton. Council President, I believe that concludes our advanced briefing for Monday, November 14.
Is there a motion to approve the November 14th advance agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay, any abstentions? All right. That brings us to briefing for tonight, even though we changed it up quite a bit.
Let's see if I kept track of the scorecard. I'll give it a shot. Advanced briefing for Monday, November 7, consent agenda. Item number one, purchase from RWC Group for the street department for a flusher truck, two flusher trucks, 3,200 gallon and a 2,200 gallon. Item number two is a contract renewal with Clean Energy. And item number three is a contract amendment with solid waste systems for daily operations of refuse trucks. Our presenter on all three is Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. First one is a couple of flusher trucks, 3,200 gallon and a 2,200 gallon truck. These were actually approved and ordered in 2020. We received them, they didn't meet our specifications, and so we, we returned one, refused the other one. So we're just basically going back to correct the OPR with a new supplier and the new prices. Actually, the prices, in a, in a rare turn of events right now, are actually less than what we were quoted in in 2020. Second item, contract renewal with Clean Energy.
Sorry, quickly on that one, but we went from a 3,200 gallon to a 2,200 gallon? Is that correct on this?
Well, we always wanted a 3,200 and a 2,200, but because the trucks that we ordered in 2020, the only way to get dual steering, we were told, was to have 3,200 gallon trucks. And so we ordered the bigger trucks.
Right.
Going back to this other supplier, we were able to get the trucks we wanted in the first place.
Awesome.
Second one is a renewal with Clean Energy. They do the repair and maintenance on our, our CNG site out there. It's done by a per-gallon equivalent, not to, this is not to exceed the $250,000. And the last one is an increase for our SWS equipment contract of $80,000. We're, we're just spending more with them than we have in the past. Cost of parts is part of that. Delays in ordering garbage trucks makes us have to fix garbage trucks more often. And then, of course, we've had some open fleet positions, so we're asking for an extra $80,000 on that contract. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Next on the consent agenda, item four, administrative reserve increase to the contract with bacon concrete for the Riverside Avenue sidewalk. Our briefer is Dan Buller.
So this administrative reserve increase was necessitated. There's a sidewalk there, and it's in a construction area where there's all sorts of trucks driving all over the place, and they drove on the sidewalk in a number of cases. So we needed to fix the sidewalk and install boulders to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore. Funds for that are coming from the UDPDA. Can I answer any questions on that?
Thank you, Dan. Item five is a contract with Copunet to upgrade the SCADA system at the Upper River Dam. Our briefer is Lauren Searle. All right. Moving then to items 6A and B as a recommendation to the list of the Spokane Registry of Historic Places. 6A, the Edwin and Dorothy Matthews House. Item 6B, the Studio Apartments at Sixth Avenue. Our presenter is Megan Duval, and I believe Ms. Duval is online.
I am, and I briefed both of these properties at the October 10th Urban Experience Meeting. The Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission did review them and recommended them both for listing at the October 19th meeting.
That's great. You did a great presentation before, so you don't have to...
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Item seven is collecting bargain agreements with Spokane Police Lieutenants and Captains. M&amp;P Association exempt A, M&amp;P Association managerial group B, 7A, B, and C. I believe Mr. Piccolo has already briefed these at committee, but he is here again. Should you have any further questions or need additional briefing? Mr. Piccolo.
I'm available for questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Items eight and nine. Item eight, acceptance of EPA Brownfield Communitywide Assessment Grant. And item nine, contract amendment extension with Sand Tech Consulting Services to provide grant writing and implementation work. Our presenter is Teri Stripes.
Thank you. Council President, council members, back in June, we made the announcement that EPA had selected our grant application. Well, now we're finally under contract, so here I need you to approve the contract accepting the funds. Then, in addition to that, I'm also asking you to amend the current contract that we have with the consultant to include this new work. This is the work that we will be focusing our intention up in Northeast for housing and also for job creation. How we do that is we work with the private property owners to do some of the due diligence that needs to occur before development, phase one, phase two, building materials, surveys, that type of work. Just to remind you, most recently, we completed a similar grant project in the university district where we had over 14 properties that we assisted. One of those properties in particular, everybody will remember, and that is the UW WSU Medical School. And that property received approximately $75,000 in benefit in those due diligence pieces of work before they were moved to construction. So this is the type of work we're going to be doing in Northeast. Any questions? Councilman Calcard, I'd like to thank you for participating in the EPA tour a couple of weeks ago, and thank you, Mr. Perkins, for your and the mayor's assistance when we got back here to City Hall. It was well-received. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Our next item on the consent agenda is item 10, contracts with Spokane Neighborhood Action Partners. 10A for Essential Home Repair Program, and 10B, the Single Family Rehabilitation Program. Our presenter is Tessa Gillett.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. This item is for approval of the 2023 contracts with SNAP for our home repair programs, and this includes $500,000 for the Essential Home Repair Program and $1.484 million for the Single Family Rehabilitation Program. Are there any questions? Yes.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious. Have we thought about, to the extent that we can with these dollars, to try and really focus in? And I'm thinking about, you know, like people's HVAC systems, and, you know, you think back to the, the high heat that we had, you know, what, a year and a half ago? And how many of those systems failed, you know, couldn't keep up, et cetera? And I just wonder if, especially in Northeast, where we have a lot of lower-income people, but just across the city, if that might not be a pretty high demand and something that we could do a lot of, a lot more of, by just focusing in on that one thing rather than kind of a larger envelope? And so, just, just curious if that's something that we've looked at, or if it's something that we could be looking at for the future.
A lot of our current conversations have been targeting specific audiences as opposed to specific issues, but that's a great idea, and certainly something I can talk to SNAP about, since they seem to have a pretty good finger on the pulse of what people are calling about. They get a lot of, a lot of intake calls every month, so they should have some pretty good input on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Item 11, A and B contracts with TD&amp;H Engineering, the 29th and Washington Monroe Project, 11B, the Market and Monroe Project. And again, our presenter is Dan Buller.
All right, so two granite overlay projects, both of which are federal funds, fairly large, kind of confusingly named, but they're granite overlays of arterials on 29th, Washington, Monroe, Market, and Lincoln. The amounts, one is $538,700, the other is $398,400, to which we propose to set aside administrative reserve. It's about $10 million overall in granite overlay work.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Items 12, A, B, and C, report of the mayor. Item 12A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations from October 21, including those of Parks and Library. 12B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, October 28, including those of Parks and Library. 12C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through October 29. Item 13, city council meeting minutes for October 17, 27, and November 3rd.
We discussed the state lobbying contacts, so we can go to outside counsel, number 15.
Number 15, outside counsel.
Last year, boy.
We lost our interim city attorney. Well, he's not president in the chambers. Hopefully, he'll hear this and come back down.
I'll text him.
He's really lost.
Item 16, I believe we briefed that at committee this afternoon, along with, I believe, item 17, which will take us to item 18, which is the agreement with the Salvation Army and the Way Out Shelter. But I do not see Mr. Finch here. I'm not sure if he's online. I don't see him.
I have questions about this.
I need him here for that. So let me text him now. We'll come back to that. The next item I have under special budget ordinance deals with grants fund from the newly accepted award of the AOC grant. I believe that was briefed at committee previously by Mr. Delaney. I believe that was briefed at committee previously by Mr. Delaney. Am I mistaken on that?
I think it was.
And then I also believe the next two ordinances relating to reimbursement grants from the general fund that the interim city attorney presented and the janitorial contract with ABM, I think those were also briefed.
Yeah.
Previously, as was the next ordinance for the police radio dispatchers. And then we had the new SBOs, 36322, 36322, dealing with 1406, 1590 funds, as well as the ordinance dealing with CMIS 36324. I believe those were all briefed.
Yeah.
As, as well. Moving then to resolutions and final reading ordinances. The resolution on the importance of the dams, I believe, was deferred by council action a short time ago. Uh, the next one is a resolution appointing Kimberly McCollum, or Kim McCollum, as the Director of Neighborhood Housing and Human Services. Uh, the mayor is going to present Ms. McCollum this evening during the 6:00 PM legislative session, so we'll hold off on that until then. Uh, that moves us to the declaration of the, executive declaration of the civil emergency of disaster under the mayor's declaration of emergency. I believe that was already briefed and discussed, uh, previously. That then takes us to ordinance establishing the zone free of nuclear armaments. I believe that was also.
Briefed that.
Briefed, briefed previously. Um, under first reading ordinances, non-exclusive franchise to use the public right of way for telecommunications for Intermountain Infrastructure Group. The briefer is Tim Zamblin, but I don't see him here. The city attorney's office must be in some kind of meeting or consultation right now. I'm not sure.
The senior person. Piccolo's here.
Mike.
Nice try, Mike. Tim's here.
There he is.
Ta-da.
Mr. Zamblin, how are you today?
Good. We were going too fast for him. Sorry. He had to run down here.
Good, good afternoon, Council. Ordinance 36308 was briefed, uh, on the Pice Committee on 9/26. This is a telecommunications franchise with Intermountain Infrastructure Group. They're a small fiber company. They're primarily, um, working in small eastern Washington counties, Shalane and Douglas, and they are developing their fiber optic system, eventually hoping to connect with Spokane. It's for a 10-year period. And are there any questions? Yes.
We've had this conversation before, just to let everybody know, that 10-year period is not unusual. It's, um.
That's the standard.
That's the standard now.
Yes.
Because we've had, you know, I questioned whether that was too much because technology moves so fast, so are we putting in something that's going to be obsolete in five years or need to be re-upped or whatever? So, okay.
Yeah, the 10-year period is much shorter than like our electrical franchise, our pipeline franchise, because they don't really change that much. So that's why the 10-year period. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zamblin. Our next ordinance, adopting a six-year citywide capital improvement program, first reading. I believe we just discussed that, uh, in the advance briefing for November 14th. Did we not? Yes, we did. Thank you. Mr. Finch is on his way, by the way, so we'll give him a few moments to get here. And, um, Mr. Smithson is also back, coming back down as well, so. And there's Mr. Finch. So I will. Eric Finch, interim director of NHHS, also part-time director of IT.
A few more hours.
Sorry, Council, I did not, did not realize that one got added, so I missed the, the review, so my apologies.
It's all yours, Mr. Finch.
All right. So for, um, the, you know, the Salvation Army, I think a lot of you have been involved in this, uh, going back over this past year. Um, you know, when this was first created between the city and the county, it was really kind of a joint, you know, mechanism, but there was, you know, this up to, to kind of $1 million kind of startup piece that was part of that, that, that equation. As we've gone, gone through this past year and kind of reconciled, you know, what it, what it's kind of taken to be, uh, successful with the, uh, with the Way Out Center, um, that kind of has been, you know, kind of come down to that 420,000-type number that was, uh, really what the core need was for them operationally. Uh, so, you know, that was, you know, that's, I think, the request that's before, is to make sure that we can get that, which allows them to kind of, uh, you know, uh, kind of both recoup and pay for those costs that, that, that we've asked them to stand up and do, uh, as well as be able to kind of move that program forward. Uh, I, I would also say, as it was kind of mentioned in the briefing paper, uh, that, you know, it's, I think, one of the, the successful programs that we can, we can look at in the community, uh, as it, it is obviously not low barrier in, in, in the intent of, you know, direct street outreach and street, uh, engagement to, to put in. Uh, it's meant for that next stage where people are basically a little bit more housing-ready, a little bit more, you know, uh, kind of life and work skills ready to move to that next phase. And so, uh, you know, out of, I think, the 260 or so people that they've served, uh, over 90, almost close to 100 have, have been placed in, in permanent housing, uh, which, you know, is, is, is a great percentage versus the, the 4% that we see traditionally through the system. So I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
I just, thinking back on, on it, um, I'm remembering a multi-year $500,000 agreement. Am I misremembering that? Not a million dollar?
No, that, that, that is kind of the foundational piece between the county and the city. We've each put up $500,000 a year from, uh, you know, the HHAA funding, uh, stream to, to kind of provide the ongoing operational costs.
Is this different?
This is different.
This amends that agreement to add that one-time 420.
Right. Which is really akin to getting the program started. Sorry.
Well, but this says that we had a $1 million startup funding for them, and so was, this was agreed to back then, the 1 million? This 1 million?
Well, I, it was briefed, but since we didn't have, I think, all the supporting detail necessarily, and I believe the last time it came back before council, I think it was voted down because it didn't have.
Correct.
The, the right detail to it, if, if memory serves.
That's right. That's right.
So, so the 420 is just, this is just a new expense that we're deciding that we're going to make today? Is that correct? This wasn't planned for?
Correct. Well, it was, I guess it was planned, it was part of the original plan, uh, but it was not necessarily, uh, part of the, uh, it's different than the $500,000 from each agency for the ongoing annual operations costs. So this is more equated to, to, to startup costs and the cost of basically getting that program off the ground.
And, and the county's also coming in with 420 then, too?
Uh, no, I, I think the, the, the original agreement, as I understand it, and I've, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, not necessarily the, the master of all the details, uh, but the, the, the county's commitment was, was different. It was to the ongoing operational costs, but not.
But they provided the building.
But they provided the building. Yes.
And we were going to pay up to a million in that startup in equivalent to the county buying the building, which was more than a million. So that was it.
So just sorry, it's the last, last piece on this then. So I guess my question is, if this wasn't necessarily we approved or planned for, but we're doing it now, what are we sacrificing? And what is it? What's the opportunity cost for the 420 going here and not going to, say, Hope House? Or going to say?
Sure.
You know, I mean, how, how is this decision being made?
Yeah, and, and, and that's a, a great question. The, the, the trade-off piece is always, you know, the, really, it's, it's, it's the biggest challenge for all of us. Uh, I, I think the only part I would add to is that it was part of the original plan. Uh, it, it just was not brought forward as a separate.
But you said not approved by us, correct?
Yeah, I, I, well, I think when it's, when it was briefed before, I think it was at the million-dollar mark, and I, and, and you might know better than I do in terms of that past history. I don't think it had all the level of detail to it. And so.
Good neighbor.
It was voted out.
Yeah. There were, we had questions about the good neighbor agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there was just, I think, aspects like that that, that made it not pass muster.
I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, get to the point of, you know, we don't have any money as a city right now, and just making sure that we are absolutely making the best decision, you know, the biggest bang for the buck that we do have. And is this going to exit more people out of homelessness or is another program? And that's, that's the level of decision I think I want to be making.
Sure.
And this might be it. I just, I don't have enough.
And I can say at least, you know, I, I think when we look at this program or even like family promise or otherwise, they have the highest percentage, I think, in terms of, of, of going to, to permanent housing.
Councilmember Bigel.
Yeah, is this, uh, funding for one year or is this part of a five-year funding plan? So is it 427,000 for this year or is it like 80,000 per year?
No, it's, it's, it's a one-time kind of more upfront cost, startup cost, similar to what we've had to do for Trac or Canon or some of these other, uh, kind of programs to get them basically outfitted and, and, and able to succeed. And so it'd just be one time. It's, it's not an ongoing, it's, we shouldn't be coming back necessarily and, and asking for $420,000 next year.
Yeah. It's, it's a one-time until the next one-time.
There, there is always complexity in our system, Councilmember.
I'll speak to that right now. This is a one-time 427, that's it. There's not going to be next time.
Oh, just to give some background on it, the, when, when the mayor was negotiating with them to try to get them to do this, because they had never operated anything like that, they didn't know how much it was going to cost. And so she sent them a letter promising the million without getting our agreement. Fair. But they relied on that letter. And then, because they didn't know if they were going to need any or up to a million. And so the letter from the mayor, they relied on that. And it turned out it was 427,000 instead of a million. So it was just, they didn't know. They now know how it runs and that and what's, so it's pretty stable funding going forward. But, but it was, especially in hindsight, it shouldn't have happened the way it did, but it did. And I, I felt, I'm promoting this because I felt like they relied on the promise that was made in the letter to them, and, and they do good work, and I, I, I think it's a good investment. I agree with Councilmember Cathcart. We don't have enough money to go around to all the places. We all got emails, multimillion-dollar requests from various providers today. Um, I'm not sure what we're going to do about that, but.
I just want to, my understanding going visiting them, this is like finishing their office space for the medical visits or like some of those start costs that they still haven't finished that they were relying on from the beginning. And, um, I believe that that million dollars has just been sitting there waiting to be spent for like the last year since we didn't approve it. And it wasn't dedicated to anything else. It's just been like, that was Way Out money. It's just been sitting there waiting.
Is, is that the case? Is there, do we have a $600,000 delta sitting in an account somewhere?
No, because, and, and I, and I think it's, it's, it's a fair question, and, and I honestly have to go back and reinforce your point. There's been so many requests and demands on our system, right, you know, over, over this past year, um, that, that we're more on the point where we're basically trying to make sure that the, the lights stay on in a number of different programs. Uh, we've done additional funding for several different, you know, you know, shelters through this past year as you've helped support us on. Each of those is basically eroded, so that, you know, there is no, I wish there was a magic bank account or a drawer, you know, that was stuffed with cash, but, but, but it's not. Um, and, and, and so I, I think that where we looked for, I, I think that, that I, I would need the accountants to help me with this, but there was a certain portion of that 420-plus thousand dollars, I want to say about half of it, um, that was in the fund that was kind of held for that. Um, and, you know, others had been kind of, you know, the Rob Peter to Pay Paul. Uh, and then we basically constituted the rest of, you know, the money to get to this $420,000 number, uh, from other, other, you know, kind of underspent areas in some of the other programs, you know, that, that have, have had a little bit of extra, and we cobbled together to make this amount. Because that was, for us, the easiest way to do it, without impacting other programs. Any other?
And just a quick question. So do we have a guarantee, because I know this came up once before, that that basement of the Way Out Shelter, the Way Out Center is not going to be used for, uh, 24/7 shelter?
Well, I think the original plan, you know, obviously not. I mean, I think that now that, that the Salvation Army is looking at, has come on for, for Canon and for Trent, you know, I, I think there's going to be, I think there's going to be an opportunity for us to look at spatialization across, like Canon, in, in some cases is, is packed to the, to, you know, probably over capacity, uh, with the space that it has. And so I, I think it provides us some options looking forward, but those would be new things, new projects that we put together and we bring back for, for your consideration.
And it has to be brought before that neighborhood council.
Correct.
Because that neighborhood had some really, a really hard time with that whole process.
Correct. And, and at least from what I've heard from, you know, both the Salvation Army and at least from the, the one engagement that, that I've had more recently in this, with, with, you know, that neighborhood council, I, I think that's been an improving situation as, as far as.
It's gone very well, but I think it, it will change the dynamic if that.
If the numbers change.
If that basement area opens up.
Absolutely understand. We, we face that across the board, yes.
The only thing that I've heard, Councilmember Stratton, is that they would expand their current service model to the basement, not that they would start a night-by-night on-demand shelter.
And it's been used for isolation with, you know, with the region, right, with the, the health district in, in the past. So there's been some uses of that, but they've been more, I, I think, based on a, a community need that was very, very defined.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Finch.
Thank you for your support.
Aren't you glad we found you?
Yes.
All right. If we could go back to our city attorney. The briefing is regarding the request for outside council contract amendment with James B. King and Evans Craven and Lackey.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Uh, this is for a, in addition to the contract, uh, we set aside $50,000 to start out with. We have gone through that. We are asking for another $50,000. This is for outside counsel to help us with a case that is going to mediation on December 1st. This is a rise, arose from a collision on November 3rd, 2018. There was a gentleman that was walking across Division Street. It's pretty far north, up near Flaming Joe's there. Uh, we likely should have had a crosswalk there. We didn't, and he was struck crossing the street. So it is set for mediation. He has, he has significant injuries and is probably going to need lifetime care, but we do have outside counsel working on it in order to help us through that process.
I, I have a offline questions for you on that.
Okay. And I apologize, I was, had a meeting at 4:30, so I ran upstairs to cover my meeting, and I was getting messages that I was needed back downstairs. So I apologize for that. Thank you, everybody. I'll hang out. Councilman Cathcart.
Thank you, Mr. Smithson. All right, moving to the.
We can connect later.
End of our advance briefing from Monday, November 7. Under hearings, H1A and one, uh, H1A and H1B, I believe those have been deferred. Uh, the council action taken a short time ago. Uh, H2, beginning hearing on proposed 2023 budget, that was part of the advance briefing, um, for November 14. H3 is the hearing set by emergency ordinance passed by council relating to the moratorium regarding building permit applications. And, yes, or?
Oh, I don't know who's briefing it. Councilmember Kinnear had to go to meet another commitment, but essentially this is the hearing tonight that we're required to do, and Spencer's not here. But, um, my understanding is that we are required to, um, have a motion to ratify the findings of fact that were included in it. There's been some concern out there that somehow the council was considering extending it. I have heard nothing to that effect. We're just waiting for staff to finish the impact fee process, and then that moratorium would be rescinded. But, so that's my understanding, is people, though, can weigh in on it one way or the other.
It's my understanding that Spencer will be here.
Yes.
He, he will be here this evening.
Council President, what are our, with regards to that particular hearing, what are our options tonight? Exactly. Are we, I mean, we, we can't rescind the moratorium tonight, correct? But we could, but we can ratify the decision to affect the moratorium. Is that correct?